I'd like to call this meeting to order, the regular meeting of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District on this night of January 23rd. And thanks for all of you coming out tonight. At this time, I'm going to lead the group in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation by Vice President Mike Schaefer. Please join me in saluting the greatest flag in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While you're all standing, Father, be with all of tonight's participants. Father, guide our board and staff as we deliberate the matters before us. Father, we ask that you also be with those who are grieving or ailing. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Director Robert Uden.
Here.
Director Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
And President James Farman.
Here.
Thank you.
We do not have any ceremonial matters or presentations this evening. Are there any -- we do have a couple of late communications here that I see in front of me. Are there any others?
No, that's it, Mr. President. We have one late communication from Mr. Mosher, and you have his comments before you.
Okay, thank you. We're now at the public comments section, and this time it's been set aside for persons in the audience to make comments on items within the subject matter jurisdictional of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District that are not listed on this agenda. Members of the public will have the opportunity to address the Board of Directors about all other items on this agenda at the time those items are considered. We would ask you to fill out one of these green little slips back here on the table and bring it forward to Noah Lonnie at your far left over there, and I'll call you up just to speak. Okay, consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any director would like to pull for discussion?
I'd like to pull number three.
Number three?
It is minor.
Okay. Any others? I'd like to -- I'd like to motion.
Move for approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion?
In the back.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three.
It's just a minor typo. Twice in the December 19th, 2013 morgue minutes, we reference our 27 pump stations, and we actually have 20 pump stations, a minor change. With that, I'll move approval of number three.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Annual report of expenses.
We just passed it.
That was part of the -- okay. Public hearing, we aren't going to have any -- General Manager, Scott, what do you have for us?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Item number 11, the financial statements for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013. Mark Davis, District Treasurer, will be handling that report.
Thanks, Scott. Mr. President, Board members, the item before you is the comprehensive annual financial report for the district for the year ended June 30th, 2013, results of the audit, the audit report in accordance with government auditing standards and required auditor communications. I would like to introduce Natim Patel, partner with White Nelson Deal Evans, who will walk you through the results of the audit this year and the required communications.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. Again, Natim Patel, partner with White Nelson Deal Evans, and I'm here to give you a brief presentation of the results of the audit. In connection with our audit, we issued our independent auditor's report for our opinion on the financial statements of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. We also issued a communication to those in charge of governance, and the final report we issued was an internal control report of our financial reporting and compliance in an audit conducted in accordance with generally accepted government audit standards. Let me cover the independent auditor's report. It is different from prior years. There was an audit standards 122, which required more information in the audit opinion, and one of the biggest changes in that is now the opinion has a heading before each of the paragraphs to try to make it easier to understand the opinion. It's a three-page opinion, so I'm going to go through that. On page one, the first paragraph talks about the report on financial statements, which was June 30th, 2013. The second paragraph discusses management's responsibility for the financial statements, which includes the design and implementation of internal controls related to financial reporting. The auditor is responsible for expressing an opinion on these financial statements. The audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted audit standards and government audit standards. We believe that the audit evidence we've obtained is sufficient to issue an opinion on the financial statements. On the second page, we have our opinion, and we have what's reported now as an unmodified opinion. In other words, the financial statements fairly present the financial position of the district as of June 30th, 2013, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The next paragraph talks about emphasis of matters. There were two new GASB pronouncements that were implemented in the current year, GASB statements 63 and 65. Our opinion was not modified, and those statements did not really have a significant impact on the financial statements other than changing the terminology. And then on the last page of the opinion, we discuss required supplementary information and the other report that we issued. The second report is a communication to those in charge of governance, which is again a three-page communication. In the first paragraph, we discussed that we have an engagement letter dated June 14th, 2013, which explained those responsibilities. We also issued a planning letter to you, August 13th, 2013. The second paragraph talks about the qualitative aspects of accounting practices, the significant economic policies that are described in Note 1 to your financial statements, and it also discusses the new standards we implemented in the past year, which were GASB 63 and 65. There were no other transactions that were unusual that we noted. The next page talks about the estimates during the financial statements. We did not have any difficulties in performing the audit. The adjustments we made to the record were not material to the financial reporting process. We did not have any disagreements with management. We did request management to give us representations that provided us with the information related to the audit. We're not aware of any management consultations with other independent accounts, and that concludes my comments related to this report. And the last report was the report on internal control of our financial reporting, and in that letter, we've noted that there are no material weaknesses that we reported in the audit, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Any of the board members have a question?
No, it was a very thorough report.
Yeah, very good job. Do you have any comments, Scott?
No, just -- this is a receiving file?
Receiving file.
It's just a receiving file, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you very much, and appreciate it. Environmental review, organics recycling program.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. You may recall back in November when we first presented, when staff first presented the organic recycling program to the board, the board delayed any decisions and directed staff to conduct a detailed or further review of an environmental review of this program, and so that's what we did. And to report our findings, I am going to turn this over to Rob Hamers, our district engineer.
Thank you. The environmental review of the program is an analysis of the collection and transportation of the organics. It is not an opinion for or against the program. It's simply an environmental analysis of the effects of the changes to the district's current trash collection program. CRNR, who we are considering to handle the organics program, has already dealt with the environmental impacts of their plant in Paris and the transportation to and from Stanton to that plant. So this is an environmental analysis of the changes to the district's program, and as a reminder to the public, would like to say that this is the environmental analysis. The following item on the agenda is the actual amendment itself. So comments on this item should be in reference to the environmental analysis itself. The environmental analysis was undertaken by myself, our general manager, and our district council. So it does represent a team approach to reviewing all the particulars with regard to potential changes in our program. To briefly review the environmental analysis, we noted that there is no change to the tonnage being collected by the district. It's simply a matter of redistributing the existing waste collection so that the organics can be processed at the CRNR plant in Paris. The change to the collection fleet would most likely result in an addition of one truck, from nine to 10 trucks, and the additional mileage would be approximately 415 miles in the service area. Changes to the environment with regard to the additional mileage being driven should be looked at in terms of what type of trucks will be collecting that, the waste stream from both containers. The plant in Paris will be creating its own natural gas as a byproduct of the process, and this is termed renewable natural gas. Renewable natural gas is the purest form of non-polluting energy that can be used for a trash collection program. So the actual additional emissions from the trucks are deemed to be, the additional emissions will be negligent considering that the fuel being used will be a byproduct of the process, and it is found to be on the negative side of adding impacts by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. Additionally, in the city of Costa Mesa, the district's fleet used to be approximately 15 trucks, and it is now down to nine, and the addition of one more truck will still leave it below the threshold that was still accepted by the city under its program, its non-exclusive commercial program, where the district has its hauler and the city of Costa Mesa has multiple haulers who are allowed to use as many trucks as they so desire. In addition to that, the change to the environment will also include recycling, an additional or, not an additional, it will be of the waste that's currently going to the landfill, 10,000 tons per year will no longer go to the landfill, it will go to the Paris plant and be recycled. So that will be saving landfill space, it will be saving the energy that OC Waste and Recycle uses to cover the landfill, it'll save over seven acres of space. And the program is also a step towards the district being in the forefront, as it usually is, towards recycling, and it'll be closer to zero waste, that is a goal of the district and a goal of many agencies. It will lead us to increasing the diversion rate from 50 to over 75 percent. When all of these impacts are added up, without crunching the numbers, it's very close to that this is not just a negligible negative impact, it might even be a positive impact because of the reduction in tonnage and the use of renewable natural gas. The wear and tear on city streets going from 15 trucks to nine trucks to 10 trucks is still very small, and as mentioned earlier, the city allows unlimited commercial trucks, and they have designed the streets for those trucks. Additionally, projects that are considered a betterment to the environment are allowed in exemption under CEQA Guideline Section 15038, which staff is recommending that the board file for that exemption because of the betterment to the environment that this program will incur. That is a brief description of the environmental review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Board members? Bob?
Rob, what you didn't mention that I think is a significant environmental benefit, you sort of mentioned it in indirect terms, but the 10,000 tons of organics that don't go to the landfill will reduce the amount of methane produced in the landfill, some of which is capturable at the various landfills, depending on what technology they use, but not all of it. And methane is such a potent greenhouse gas, you know, I think that would add to what you said, and you may have said that indirectly.
Yes, that's true, Director Uden. Thank you for mentioning that. And on the other side, the gas that is recovered at the Paris plant will be renewable natural gas, so it goes from a deleterious gas to a beneficial gas. So thank you for that comment.
Director Schaefer?
Rob, if we move forward with the approval of the staff recommendation, we then file the CEQA exemption request. Do we have a timeline on how long that takes? And that's the first part of the question. Second part of the question would be, what if they come back and say, no, you're not getting a CEQA exemption? Does that have any bearing on moving forward or not moving forward with the next topic?
I'll answer part of the question, and perhaps our attorney can answer the rest of it. The finding that staff is recommending is that this is not a project under CEQA because of the minimal changes to the environment that will occur with the additional truck and the additional mileage. So staff is recommending that the board find under CEQA that this is not a project for the reasons so stated. The addition of filing the exemption for the betterment of the environment, if that exemption were not found held to be intact, it would not affect the first action that the board would already have taken to, with regard to this finding that this is not a project.
Okay.
And perhaps Colin has additional information regarding the exemption under 15038.
No, I agree with the analysis that the district engineer is giving the board.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other board members have comments? At this time, I would, we do have Jim Mosher, who would like to speak to this item. Jim, would you please come forward? State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Thank you, President Farman and members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher, and I live in Newport Beach, 2210 Private Road. Perhaps Mr. here on the speaker card. I actually wanted to make a non-agenda comment first, which is it's good to see a much larger-than-usual turnout here, and I would encourage the people to attend the board's regular meetings, where I think you'll see that the district handles most of its matters in a fairly competent and conscientious manner. And for those who are not able to attend, it's good that the board is taking a video of the meeting, which it posts on its website, but the non-agenda comment I wanted to make is the video of the last meeting, December 19th, which I could not attend, that was posted on the internet. The sound, the audio is totally inaudible. There is a separate audio recording that's usable, but the video, the sound is unintelligible. I think in making the CEQA comment, you have to establish that you have some credentials. I have no credentials in the environment. I do have a PhD in physics from Caltech, so I know something about science. If the question is whether this project is going to have an impact environmentally on Costa Mesa, I submitted written comments to you. I think the analysis is just totally incorrect. It makes the incorrect assumption that there's going to be a negligible increase in the traffic caused by these trucks running around the streets. It says, it quotes a figure which is not clear, of the current route takes 4,050 miles, which I don't know if that's the route in one week to cover all the streets, or a month, or a year, what that is, and because it's only adding one truck to nine, it's going to add 450 miles. This is incorrect. Think of something like a racetrack lined with barrels, and you go around and pick up all the barrels in one hour. That's our current system. You're going to change that to have half the barrels of different color. It's, you're going to be able to go around more steely, because you're only picking up half. Pick up half in half an hour, then you make a second pass around to pick up the other half in the next half hour. You've gone twice as many miles as you did before. It doesn't matter how many trucks you use. How you accomplish it twice as many miles, you're producing twice as much emission, because unlike what you heard, this gas is no different than the gas that the trucks are currently burning.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Mosher.
Okay. And not only is there impact, but there is an alternative to this mode of collection that would not have that impact, namely CRNR could provide trucks that pick up both barrels at the same time. So I think you, as a board, have to consider why are you doing this? Having twice as many miles, going around twice as fast is going to have an impact on traffic, noise, wear and tear on the streets, as the Costa Mesa City Manager pointed out in one of your days-long meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. An item, well, we'll wait till we get to the next item. We do have one more speaker, but it's on item 13. Do we need action on item 12?
Yes, Mr. President, we need you to take action, either you approve or don't approve staff's recommendation, but we need action.
I'll move that we accept staff's recommendation on item 12.
Second motion. Discussion? Just.
Michelle, let's just speak on this item.
Okay. We do have a, I don't know what, this is, we do have two other speakers who would like to address this issue. Phil Morello? Bill, would you identify yourself and your address for the record?
I have two addresses. I own rental property on the west side of my home address. I prefer to give my post office box, which is 10487 customers. I've been a resident for 32 years, customers, I know most of you. I did attend the meeting you had on Saturday, and I did raise some questions, and I didn't hear any answers to those questions. When I did raise those questions, the indication was that you were going to think about those questions, and hopefully there was an answer, but I heard no answer whatsoever. The previous gentleman made a good comment. I'm not in opposition to the program so much, but I'm in opposition to the impacts it has on our streets, and like I said at the previous meeting, it's a nightmare for the rental homes in our city. I know you are all smart individuals, so I bet you if I asked this question, what percentage of rental property there is in Costa Mesa compared to family home or regular homeownership, you're going to be able to give me that answer.
60 percent.
It's at least 51 percent. At least it was 51 percent a number of years ago. So the majority of this impact will be in the rental neighborhoods. Myself, as a rental owner, I have problems with putting trash cans out, and I've not heard an answer on what we're supposed to do. It's not only myself, but there were other individuals that had the same question in the audience. Currently, I have five houses in one lot. Those cans are put out front, there's 10 cans, two houses per house. Now, you're asking me to put 15. We're supposed to put the cans off of the curb, off of the median, into the curb area where they pick up the cans. There's virtually no parking there, because I know probably none of you live in a rental neighborhood, but if you do, parking is a super premium in this city here, okay? The homes are overcrowded, number one. Number two, it's not like when I grew up, when teenagers didn't have cars. Every teenager has a car, so if you have a house with three people in it, and one's a teenager, that third car is going to be parked on the street somewhere. So what is happening now, most of the homes that I see, the driveways are being blocked by the cans, people cannot have ingress or egress out of the properties. In addition, the trucks do not pick up the cans if they're not placed in the gutter off of the curb. So now you're asking me to take from 10 cans to 15 cans, so where do I put those other five cans?
30 seconds.
In addition, I think it's going to have an impact on the streets, the maintenance, and our city is underfunded in terms of being able to repair streets, and I think this is going to be leading to a franchise fee, which I hope you're not going to be copying Department of Water and Power stuff from Los Angeles, where they're paying $20 billion into the coffers of the Los Angeles city, so that they have a franchise to run their trucks on the street. That could happen here in this city. So it's not objection, I'm not objecting to the green program, I'm objecting to the actual impact it's going to have. I don't think it should cost us more either. We're paying plenty for trash. You guys have one and three-quarters years of operating expenses already saved, and now you're asking for more money from us? It's millions and millions of dollars. I don't know what your budget is, probably 50 or 60 million dollars you have put away somewhere. Thank you.
Maybe CRNR, maybe you can make some notes and address this at a later time. We do have another speaker, Gail Hendrick.
Hi, Mr. President. My name's Gail Carson-Hendrick, and I own my home at 282 Rochester Street on the east side of Costa Mesa. And while I appreciate the comments that opponents to the proposal of the organics recycling program make, I believe that everybody as individuals needs to participate in recycling and doing whatever we can to lessen the trash that goes into the landfills. So I strongly support the proposal and urge you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our remaining speaker wants to speak on item 13, which we're going to be heading to, so why don't we go ahead and have her come on up and give us her thoughts? Beth Rafrakis? I'm sure I pronounce that wrong.
Beth Rafrakis, Eastside Costa Mesa resident. I attended both of the town halls, and the second one went much better than the first one. I think that there were many questions and issues that were raised by residents, which are valid concerns, including some that Mr. Morello raised, that I don't feel have been addressed. I also think that since the workshops that you had were held during the holiday season, residents were not focused on recycling, they were focused on the holidays. So I think you need to have additional town hall meetings and workshops to explain this to residents. The number of residents attending the two workshops was less than your survey sampling, so I think you need to have more residents be aware and get their input. I should say that I'm a recycler. I've been recycling at the OCC Recycling Center since it was on the road back to the dirt area, and so I don't have anything against recycling, but I do have some issues. One is, that's been already mentioned, are the additional cans on the street on trash day. That creates visual light. Also, we're going to small block developments where there's less space between the structures, so where are people going to put all those trash cans? The other thing is, I have a problem with not bagging the food materials that you're going to be putting in there, and that creates odor. I'm sorry, it does. And your idea of having a little pail to put in the kitchen And your idea of having a little pail to put in the kitchen is not too practical as far as I can see. I think that, and that creates more problems for residents in having to deal with it. The other thing, the food items also going in to the trash, the organic container, is going to attract homeless and also animals. We have a coyote problem in this city. You have raccoons. Raccoons are smart enough to go in the trash can. So I, you know, concerned that there's going to be more scavenging. Trash cans get knocked over. You have a lot on the streets, even on trash day, that currently get knocked over because they're not lined up so that the trash can take them out.
30 seconds.
So that's a problem. And I think that the additional truck traffic on the street is going to have a negative impact on our infrastructure. My street, I don't think that they've just, you've done it, and it's been 25 years since we had our street. So that's a concern to me. Thank you, and I hope you will have additional workshops.
Okay, thank you. That's all the speakers that have registered. I'm wondering if we should ask CRNR to respond somewhat to some of the questions that were raised.
Before you move on, we did have a motion in a second.
I know. We're still under discussion.
Okay.
Dean, would you like to address, or Michael, or whoever?
Thank you, Mr. President, Board. My name is Dean Ruffridge with CRNR. It's nice to see you all again. I believe there's three issues I'll comment on that were brought up by the last two speakers. The first one was the number of carts. And the hopes of the program, as outlined in the staff report in the program, is that a lot of people won't use all the carts they have today. So if a tenant or a household currently uses two carts, many of those will turn one cart in or use one trash cart, we call it a mixed waste cart, one organics cart. So the feeling is that there will not go from, five units will not go from 10 carts to 15 carts. Possibly we'll stay at 10 carts because each unit will have one of each of the two best carts. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
The, I don't know how well I can say it, but the.
You know, we can't have dialogue here.
The second one was the number of routes, and I disagree with Mr. Mosher, but currently we're on nine routes. We've been able to reduce that over the years from the previous owners, many of you know, from 15. We'll go from nine routes that currently pick up mixed waste, a single pass, to six routes that do mixed waste, and four routes that do organics. So the, the staff report is correct. It only adds about 450 miles a week, going from nine routes to 10 routes. The third pro, the third issue that was brought up was bagging the food waste. And as, as most of you know, Mr. Silva's proud of the world and looked at a lot of these programs. The latest program that was implemented, similar to this program proposed tonight, is up in the San Francisco Bay Area. And the mixture of food waste and organics does not create odors. In fact, the worst odor that we pick up as trash people is green waste. That is the worst odor. And that is the worst contaminant on a mixed waste, single stream program is green wa, is grassy waste. So odors, basically what happens a lot of times, what's going on in San Francisco, is that the odors from the food waste are kind of absorbed by the widdy waste, by the other organics in the barrel. And as far as food attracting transients and critters, we have not experienced that. They have not experienced it, even in the remote areas of San Francisco and Oakland. So if that is a problem, maybe some locking lids can resolve that, which we have that option here also. But right at this point, I don't see that as an issue. Is there any other questions for us at this point?
Any board member have a question?
Dean, there are, there are rental areas in the city that put their trash cans on, on the curbs. I'm not sure, I haven't been to Mr. Morello's rental properties, but, and if, I guess the ones that I've seen, though, actually don't allow parking there, so, you know, I'm speaking out of turn. I, you know, I'll further address this issue when, as we, as we address the next item.
Can I get a clarification? We service four, up to four units by definition, and what about, what if there are five units? I mean, they can opt to use our service, or what is the?
I manage.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The, the way it works right now is that, under the city code, that the city will say to a development that comes in that if they are five units or more, that you need to have a trash bin or dumpster unless you make arrangements with the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. And what occurs is that the developer submits a site plan to the district, Javier Ochiki, sitting in the front row, who then works with CRNR to make sure that the trash trucks can enter and exit properly and pick up the containers. So we have progressed from servicing developments with more than four units. And it happens on a case-by-case basis, and it's looked at by the district, the city, and CRNR. So it's done so that all parties' opinions are respected. And developers actually prefer that individual containers are used. They say that it gives the residents more of a single-family home feeling, and it does avoid some of the pitfalls of having a dumpster and trash thrown and missed and sitting there for long periods of time open.
Thank you, Rob.
Mr. Ruffrakis, and thank you, Rob. Just to add on to that, approximately, I'd say about 21,000, we have a little over 21,000 customers we service. Of that amount, I would say about 18% of that is for multifamily units. Most, and most of that is for units. We do service some units that are larger than four units that are grandfathered in. I don't have those numbers with me, but we do have some that are five or six or seven units, but it's a small amount.
Okay. Thank you. Board, any further discussion or questions? Have a question of the manager?
Mr. Fairman, one thing that was brought up was the workshops. And are we planning additional workshops even though this is approved or not approved tonight?
Well, that's going to be, that's going to be a discussion on the next item on the agenda. We're going to talk about that. That's one of the options you have. You can delay decisions tonight and hold some more workshops.
What happens if we do approve this tonight? Is there other workshops being planned?
Yes, that is, that is correct. Even if you approved the agreement, we still plan on, in fact, it's in the agreement with, in the second amendment, that we at least have a minimum of three more workshops in the community, and we can have more if we want to. That's just the workshops. In addition, there's other public education outreach methods that we will utilize as well.
I might remind everyone that we've been meeting with CRNR and planning and having meetings for, what, two or three years. Of course, we did notify the public like we have in the last couple of months, but, you know, we, we have been out there and we've done an exhaustive amount of research in, on, on this project and, you know. But if, if the feeling is, everybody feels that we need more education before we vote on it, then great, but, you know, I guess that's what the question is here. We have a first and a second on.
Am I correct? First, the first, I was, we kind of jumped ahead. We're still on item number 12, and we need direction from the board. Are you going to accept the environmental review? Then I suggest we go to item number 13. Then we can go to more discussion on the organic recycling program.
Okay. Any further discussion on item 12? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I could take it over from here. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is the, opposed before you is the second amendment to the franchise agreement with CRNR, and it's, it's really twofold in the agreement. One, it has improvements based on the audit we recently did on CRNR from Mike Bia, and then the second part is implementing the organic recycling program. And the, in attachment A in the staff report is a real detailed report on what, what spells out in the second, second amendment. What I'm going to go over right now is a little bit about the organic recycling program. And, and as you mentioned, we did have two, two workshops to the public. They were well-attended, and as you see, it's well-attended again tonight. And there was quite a few issues that were brought up in both those workshops, and I'll try to address them all right now. One of them was, was the odors. And I think you heard Dean Ruffridge talk about the odors a little bit here tonight. One thing we're looking into, it was actually brought up in the workshop, is what about biodegradable bags? You know, can we put our food waste in biodegradable, biodegradable bags and put those in, in the organic carts? And CRNR is currently reviewing that right now and see if that's, that's feasible. We don't believe the odor will be any different than what it is right now, the trash cans. So as long, as long as you keep the lids shut, we don't believe it's going to be an odor issue, but we are looking at biodegradable bags as, as an option. As far as cost to the ratepayers, that was talked extensively. Yes, this is going to be additional cost of about $500,000 a year. And how we pay for that, there was a couple of options the board can consider. As you know, this year, the board just approved a second, consecutive rate decrease, and we'll have, that rate will remain the same next year. And so after that, then the board will have a couple of considerations. We can keep the rate stabilized using our reserve funds in our solid waste for at least four or five years, keep it at that same rate, about $18 a month. And then it'll, then it'll spike up, you know, once that, that, the reserves are drawn, withdrawn, it'll spike up a couple of dollars, two, three dollars a month. The other option is.
Scott, I think the number was $1.81. Do you have a different number than that?
Well, that's what my projection was, if, if we kept it stabilized for, you know, five years, then it'll, it'll shoot up a few dollars. But again, those are just projections. Another option is to have small incremental increases. So after, next year, maybe a small increase of 50 cents a month, and have an incremental increase of 50 cents a, a month every year. That's one option. So, so we did look at how to pay for this, and we gave the board a couple of options, and we concur, we recognize it is, there is a cost, but also want to point out that the rate for the AD system is the lowest rate out there. We negotiated the lowest rate with CRNR, and under the agreement, if CRNR was able to negotiate a lower rate with any other city, then they must honor that rate with us as well. So I do, I do want to make that point clear. Another question was.
So in summary, basically, we've reduced the rates $1.95 in the past two years, $1.95 one year and $1 the other year.
That's correct.
Basically, this program will, when it's fully functioning, require that they go back to the old $19.95, $20 a month rate.
Yes, and in fact, one of my projections is that if you do the small incremental increases, like a 50 cent increase, then you'd be back up to $19.95, which was the original rate a couple of years ago, in the five, six years from now. So that's, that's a one option. Another issue that was brought up by, by the workshop was physically handling the food waste, you know, how are they going to handle the food waste itself? And as we mentioned in the presentation, the district would be providing kitchen pails to residents where they're making, if they're prepping for their dinner, they could put all their leftovers or whatever in the kitchen pails, and then they can carry their, their food waste and dump it in the organic containers, make it a little more convenient rather than taking plate by plate and scraping it off to the, off the, in the container every night. So we'll also have, again, very comprehensive brochures and, and educational materials to explain how to handle your food waste. And again, as we mentioned, there aren't going to be trash cops out there. You know, if, if by chance people put their food in the, in their mixed waste can, they're not going to be fined, you know, they're, they're not going to be talked to. It's just an option for residents who, who want to do the right thing and recycle their food waste, here is an option for you. The, the concern about the additional trash cans in the streets, particularly for multifamily units, we, that is true. We do recognize that some of these, these rentals have a lot of trash cans. We'll have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. It's, it's quite feasible that some of these multifamily units might not need organic carts because they don't have any yard waste, or maybe they produce a lot of limited green waste. But as, as we mentioned, we'll have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and maybe it's just best that they opt out of the program. There is that option to opt out, but that's on a case-by-case basis. As far as increasing the number of trucks in, in the city streets, I think you heard it, you heard it from Dean, yes, we're adding one more truck to the fleet, but you also understand, the nine trucks are already picking up the mixed waste, some of those trucks are going to be transferred with the organics because now there's less waste to be picked up. So, so there's actually, so that's where we come out, okay, this is one additional truck at 450 miles a week, additional, additional 450 miles a week will be added on to the existing 4,050 miles a week that's currently be driven, driven by CRNR trucks. There was also a question about, well, if I'm opted out, am I still going to pay a rate increase? And that's something I think we need to consider, and again, and go on a case-by-case basis, and see how many people have opted out. And then my suggestion is come back to the board on a later date, and we look at tiered rates. You know, we look at rates that are, that are different for those who aren't in the program and those who are in the program. It's something to consider, and we can bring that back to the board at a later time. So that, that's pretty much, I think, some of the main issues. I think Dean mentioned the animal problem. I think the green waste and food waste, it's very heavy material. I think it's going to be very hard for animals to get into those trash cans, very hard to tip them over. But we do have lockable containers as an option. As far as scavenging, I don't, I don't believe people are going to be scavenging food waste. They're going to be more looking in for recyclables like cans and bottles and plastics. So I don't, I don't believe scavenging is, is going to be an issue as far as green waste goes. So I also want to mention that in your, in your packet is, I did receive a bunch of emails from the public, and there, or you hope you have a chance to read those. It's the mixed opposition and support of the program. For tonight, you do have the option, there's again, a couple of options for you. You can, you can approve the agreement, the second agreement, tonight. And if you do approve it, the program won't be implemented till later in the year, so that gives almost a whole year to get the word out to the public how, how the program's going to work. As I mentioned earlier, we'll have at least a minimum of three workshops. We'll have a comprehensive public education program. So if you, if that's if you approve it tonight. The other option is, you can, you can wait. You can wait if you want to. If you want, you know, you should see the turnout tonight, and as, as far as the, the last workshop, we had a very good turnout. A lot of people are interested in the program. We can, you can delay the decision, direct staff to have some more workshops, and we can have some more and get some more feedback from the, from the public and bring those back to you, and, and bring that back to you there February, March, it's up to the board. So that is my presentation. And, and if you want, I just also want to know, we do have the presentation available. If you want to, if you want us to demonstrate, show it again to the public, it is available if you want us to do that. So happy to answer any questions.
Let me ask you one, one question, and, and that is, what if we don't do anything? What if we don't do anything? What's that going to affect? I mean, what, what's the ramifications of that? You know, my understanding is we've got to do something, or it's going to get done for us, and it may not be real pleasant.
Yeah, that's correct. And, and that's what we explained in, in the, in the workshop, why are we doing this? And, and, you know, there was a couple of reasons, you know, why, but the big one was, is, is regulatory reasons, because we believe alternative data cover is going to be no longer approved, is going to be appealed by, repealed by, by the state, which means that, that every city is going to have to recycle their green waste, because right now, most would use alternative data cover. And there's, and in our opinion, there's just not enough composting facilities in Southern California to handle that demand. And so our position has been, well, let's be in the forefront, let's be proactive, be in the front of the line, and let's, let's take care of this issue before everyone starts scrambling and, and, you know, trying to find what, what they're going to do. And so we believe if we don't do anything, then we're going to be in, in the bucket with everyone else scrambling to find how to recycle green waste. And by that time, the AD cost is going to be up much higher as well.
Thank you. I do have two, two more speakers, and it looks like maybe a third. Phil Morello, or Morello? Yeah, Phil.
Thank you again. Just wanted to comment about a couple of items because Mr. Carroll brought them up. Firstly, a lot of the stuff he said was speculation, and maybe we could do or couldn't do and all that stuff. I'd like to see all those details ironed out before this thing goes forward. I don't know exactly what the solution is going to be. This is crazy to me. One big question I have is why do we have to be first? I mean, we're a very small city. Can't we let one of these bigger cities take the lead on this issue? There's, what, 34 cities in Costa Mesa, and we have to be the first one to do it? The question about, a comment on the number of cans. The question about, a comment on the number of cans that were put in front of rental You know, as soon as there's an empty can, the gardener's going to throw grass in it. So you might have, you might have two cans, but now you have a third can at each rental property and all of a sudden that third can gets full. Gardeners are supposed to take the clippings with them, but trying to get them to do it is like next to impossibility. So they're constantly filling up cans. If they see an empty can, they have to pay to dispose of their waste. So it's easier for them to leave it where they clip it rather than take it away and have to pay for it. So individuals that tell me how my rental property is supposed to be run and how things happen and all that, they don't have a clue. I mean, the way you think it's going to run is not exactly the way it's going to happen. A couple of comments, but then lost my train of thought.
Bonnie Winslow. Bonnie?
I'm Bonnie Winslow. I live on the Way Hall Circle and I've lived in Costa Mesa for many, many years. I do like the idea of recycling. I've kind of wondered why we haven't asked anything on that order up until now. However, it sounds to me, I've not been able to attend the workshops because I've been out of town. So I would really appreciate having more. It sounds to me like we don't really know enough yet to vote on this tonight. And like this gentleman said, I would like to see the details ironed out before you vote on something. I don't like this, let's vote on it so we can see what's in it type thing. As a registered nurse, I have a public health concern. I live near South Coast Plaza. There are coyotes that go down the street there. They've been seen, they've jumped over the fence in my neighbor's backyard. I do not believe that these trash cans, that the lids are tight enough on them that, you know, they won't attract an animal, raccoons also. As this lady said, they're smart enough to get in there. Another thing is flies. They are definitely not tight enough to keep the flies out. I haven't heard how you're going to, you know, put things in these cans. But if you just put a bunch of food waste in a can, that is going to stink and that is going to cause flies. And that is going to make maggots. And if those cans only get picked up once a week, I don't want one sitting in front of my house like that. And I don't want one sitting in my garage like that, especially in the summertime when it gets hot. So I think those are more things to think about. My main concern is from a public health standpoint.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next speaker is Flo Martin.
Flo Martin, forty-seven-year resident of Costa Mesa. Been recycling for over forty years. And my husband and I now own a second property in the Santa Cruz Mountains in a small town called Scotts Valley, smaller than Costa Mesa. Scotts Valley has three cans. We have three cans in our community. And we're not going to be the first in Costa Mesa. Northern and Central California has had two to three cans for a long, long time. We have no problem up there with coyotes. We have no problems up there with mountain lions, which are in our neighborhood. We have no problem out there in Scotts Valley with flies or maggots. We have three cans, one for green, one for food, and one for recyclable stuff like cans and bottles and glass. It has worked very well. The whole community is proud of what they do and I'm proud of what we do. I would like to see you move forward with this initiative to start recycling the way C and R and R has suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Flo. Our next speaker, Ron Ambergy.
President Ferriman, members of the board, I know all you guys, you're all in girls, you're all good people, good community people, so I know you're doing the right thing here. I'm going to come at this from a slightly different angle. That's more of the economic side of it, the business side of it. I know recently Newport just started the trash collection with CRNR. They got a discount for a transfer, for having their own transfer station, basically. And I was wondering if you guys considered having various locations throughout the city where we could collect in bulk, maybe with a forty-yard container, the green waste. You could put it to, I don't know, four or five different locations and set up something with the local gardeners where they could come and dump. It's just a thought. Because I'm not an engineer, but I know if you have two trucks running around, it's going to be double. It's just pretty simple. It's going to be double the miles. So the other thing is, I know CRNR is a great company and everything, but I would hope you don't get locked into, you know, a contract that goes on forever. Since this is a new technology, I mean, put a clause in there that you get to at least bid it out again in five years or, I mean, pick a period of time where it makes sense and get competition into the mix a little bit. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Present questions? Mike?
Someone asked, why shouldn't we be out front? And I don't know if we specifically enough addressed why we want to be out front, why, you know, the benefits to being out front. I know one of the benefits to me, I was actually reminded by, one of my granddaughters that we need to be out front. They live in another city and like Ms. Martin said, they have more than one can. This stuff isn't easy. I mean, it's been really easy and really nice for us to just dump everything into one can and let somebody else sort it. Sometimes it takes a little work and a little more personal responsibility to do what's right for the environment. And to me, that's one of the reasons we should be out front. We need to be, we need to show not just the residents of Costa Mesa, but we need to show the state. As President Ferriman said, not going to be long before the state comes back to us and says, you guys better get your, you know, what together because you're behind. You're not out front and it's going to cost you. So that's one of the reasons we should be out front with something like this. I think Mr. Morello said, you know, we're a small city, why should we be first? I don't care what our size is. I think we need to do the responsible things for the environment. The other thing is the cost benefit. I don't think we, I don't think we've achieved the cost benefit that CRNR is offering to us. I mean, by being out front, we're going to get the lowest cost of anybody, including the city of Los Angeles, which is going to make a lot more money for CRNR than we are. So when we can get a cost benefit that is a tangible, reasonable, or not reasonable, very good benefit that needs to go back to our ratepayers, then I think we should be out front. Now, with that said, Mr. Fakas mentioned the fact that we had two town halls and they were both in the holidays and I pretty much agree with her. I'm at the point where I think, based on the participation we've had, especially in the first two town halls and obviously tonight, that maybe we ought to consider having at least a couple of more town hall meetings before we make this decision, including the suggestion that staff made about not just having them here at the community center, but maybe using Belerick, maybe using Hailcrest. Or let's get out in the community and really be out front and show our residents that we want them to understand this. I mean, there's a lot of questions that were posed tonight and at the, I wasn't at the January eleventh meeting, but the first one, that there's still some question and somebody mentioned earlier about making sure we have all the intangibles answered and all of the questions answered. So I wouldn't be opposed to having some more town hall meetings and letting people give their input on this.
You know, I am concerned about one thing and that is that everybody is educated on what we're doing. I don't feel you all are, seriously, no offense. And a lot of you have come to more than one, but at the same time, sometimes that redundancy helps because you think of different reasons and different comments that you want to make as far as all of us talking and saying what's going on. You know, our directors are known for educating people. When something comes up on the agenda, we always let everybody know what's going on. And we don't make any kind of decisions unless everyone understands it. Doesn't mean we're going to do what you want, but we want you to understand what's going on. And because of that, and because of my phone calls I've gotten too, as well as people, some of you here have said to me, you know, we need to have more workshops. And I really do believe that we should take February and March, when it isn't the holidays, and turn around and have get-togethers as far as workshops. And even some of us that can make it, come there and listen. Because the first one was so beneficial, we all came and we all listened and we understood where your concerns were, because we had no idea what you actually were going to ask. And I think it's a healthy thing that we understand and we're not trying to shove anything down anyone's neck or, you know. We're trying to make you understand what's going on in every way we can. And as far as the financial end of it, yes, if we do it first, that is great for the community and for us, for the simple reason, all of us up here live in Costa Mesa too, we get a better break financially if we're the first in. Now, I have no idea how long it's going to take that we can be the first, you know, until they suddenly say, you know, hey, you know, you've got to decide. Either you're going to go for it or you're not. But they're very understanding and they've been really great about the presentations and I'm sure they'd be willing to have more presentations. And I think that's the way to go.
I attended the second workshop and I had a list of questions. I wrote down the questions that came from the audience and there were significantly more than Scott has addressed. I think we need to review the videos from, was the first workshop video?
No.
The second workshop was the video.
Okay, well, did staff take, I wasn't at the first workshop. I was in Iowa, Rutherford. The, their staff or somebody must have written down the questions that came from the first workshop. I did from the second workshop and I have them at home on my computer. What I would like to see staff do is address each question and that'll answer eighty percent of them. And from those answers, you know, it'll potentially generate more questions. So frequently asked questions, we need to have a hard copy of that at any of the future workshops that we do. And we also need to put them on our website. I have a list of probably fifteen or twenty questions that people from the community ask at the second workshop. This technology is, we had another trash vendor come in to our meeting one time, early on in our discussions with CRNR concerning this technology. And he called it Microsoft-like technology. And I know the man and I was impressed with that. I've done a lot of research on what the costs are in adjacent communities. And I've done a little research on, you know, what the potential future costs will be if we don't start the program relatively quickly, if we're not the first one in or whatever. There are several communities that are very interested and very much would like to be the first community. You know, that doesn't make any difference to me, but there are a number of communities that would like to buy into this program with CRNR. The research that I've done, I'm an engineer, you know, I like details, I like to do research. If we wait, if we wait this out, it's going to be substantially more cost. I want, well, I'll give you a wild-ass guess, my wild-ass guess. And that could be up to double what the costs are. You know, we're talking about a program that basically the dollar eighty-one or two dollars a month for every one of us, when we run out of reserves. But basically, you deserve to have this program funded with those reserves, because basically it was your money. What we did back in 2006, when I came on the board, we estimated that the tonnage would continue to go up on the slope that it had been in '04, '05, and '06. And staff looked at it and they made an honest assumption. And it looked like it was going up five percent a year. It didn't go up five percent that year, but the fees that we enacted, in fact, I'm not sure I was on the board yet or not, but I would have enacted them. The fees went up five percent, went up to nineteen ninety-five. The actual tonnage went down five percent. So all of a sudden, you were paying ten percent extra for your trash collection. And we knew this program was coming. The environmentalists in Northern California and the politicians have been talking about going to seventy-five percent recycling or diversion rate for a long time. So we didn't know, you know, whether those fees, whether those fees that you were paying the sanitary district would be needed or when they would be needed, but we knew that they would eventually be needed to pay for this technology. They, it turns out that you continued to reduce the amount that you recycled, the tonnage. The tonnage went from forty-four thousand tons a year down to about forty thousand tons a year. And it became more evident that this technology was, that this regulation going from fifty percent diversion to seventy-five percent diversion was coming. It's now here. It is a state regulation. We continued to save your dollars in reserves and continued to build the reserves. And then basically, two years ago, we decided, you know, we began to get a clue what the technology might cost to go to the seventy-five percent criteria that the state was mandating. And so we began then to give you rebates. And so the first year, we reduced our fees by ninety-five cents and the last year, we reduced them by a dollar. And we still have enough money to offset some of these, some of these costs for this technology for quite a long time. I do want you all and me, I've listened to this presentation probably seven or eight times and I learn something every time I listen to it. And I understand that you, some of you may not even have seen the presentation. It's on our website. You know, when I look at that, you know, I still learn things and I'm a very detailed person. So I understand and respect that, I think that we should probably delay this. I don't believe we need to delay it more, delay the decision more than a month. But we do need to give you all time, you know, to further ask, to ask whatever questions you have. We can address some of these issues. We can go out to Phil Morello's property and CRNR can go with us and we'll take a look and see. Then we'll know how much green waste he produces and will not. And he doesn't have to opt into the program. He can choose not to opt into the program. I produce very little trash. I have two cans, you know, I produce a- I have two cans, you know, I produce a quarter of a can, I produce another quarter can of green waste. I'll get one can, I'll give one back. I don't want more cans in my yard. I don't need more cans in my yard, and that's because I use, I recycle, I recycle like some of the people talked about here. I also don't use much electricity, and I don't use much water, I don't use much resources. Anyway, I would, I would support not delaying this decision very long, but giving you all and me time, you know, to further think through this program. And I would request that staff go back through their notes, and I'll give them my notes for all, and answer every one of the questions, you know, that have been raised in the workshop. And, you know, many of us have talked to citizens in the community, and when we talk to them and explain the program, you know, there's general buy-in. But you all deserve, you know, to choose whether you buy into this program or not, and some of you will, you know, with more information. But I don't want to delay making this decision probably more than a month.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. President.
All right, I agree with Mr. Uden. I think that we need to address all the concerns of the citizens. And in the workshops, that I went to, the first one was a great presentation, and I think the second was even better. I think we have the knowledge from CRNR to get the word out to as many workshops as we can within the month, but I think we need to make a decision by next month. That would be my position. Thank you. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one, we can do that, it's not a problem, we can have more, more presentations, but our next, our next meeting, no, our February meeting is February 27th?
Yes.
And Vice President Schaefer's not going to be there that day, so if you're going to, if you want us to have a meeting in February, then I said we reschedule the regular meeting on February, or, or another option, we just have a couple, we have some workshops in February, and then we bring this back in March.
I would, I would prefer to get it done in February myself, but we do need Director Schaefer there, so maybe we need to set a different date, or, I hate to do that, but...
Yeah, the only problem that really cramps us is if we're going to have, we'd like to have at least two, two more would be great, so we need to get the word out. It worked nice with the postcards, a little pricey, but it's effective, we need to get the word out, so it crunches, it makes it pretty tight. That's why if we do it in March...
If we change the board meeting to the night, can we do it to the 26th, the night before? That still gives you the same amount of time.
We can do it, sure, sure.
Is that a, is that a call, is, can we do that the night before?
Yes.
On the Wednesday.
That's Orange County Sanitation District meeting, but that's, you know, I couldn't miss it. You know, I think all of us up here, in a perfect world, would like to maintain our single-stream method, and that's what you have right now. I mean, I'm talking about the board. That method has been good to us for, what, 20 years? We exceeded every diversion percentage way in advance of when it was required, historically all along the way. You know, it's separated by what's called a MRF, I don't even know if you know what that is, but it's, it's got magnets in it, it's got, you know, it's a machine that extracts or separates the trash, and then at the end, they hand-sort it. You know, we had, that guarantees 100% cooperation and recycling, so, but we can't, we can't stay with that. We can't stay, we can't stay stagnant, because the government is not allowing us to. We've got to go to 75% in diversion from the trash, and we've got to eliminate the ground cover thing. I mean, we don't have a choice, we've got to do something. And we're trying to do, you know, the best with what we got, and I just want you all to know that, and, but we are, we're certainly willing to listen to more, more of your questions, and I do think that we need to set up at least one or, one meeting or two in the month of February, and, you know, here are the, here are their remarks.
What about February 25th, a Tuesday, for the board meeting? Do you want to, so we all, five board members can, you want all five board members at this meeting, I'm assuming so? I suggest that you set up the February meeting tonight, so, so members, the public knows that, we have it on videotape, so when that change is going to be.
So you're talking about Tuesday, the 25th?
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
I can do that night.
I'll adjust my plans to make sure I'm here.
Okay, all right.
Robin, you?
So everyone's okay? So, February 25th?
25th.
Okay. All right. And then we'll start next week, thinking locations, and I think it'd be best if we have the different locations in the community, and then start getting the word out.
Do we need a motion to do all this?
Yes, Director Schaefer, we need a motion.
I will move that we...
Table it?
Well, I'll move that we direct staff to organize additional town hall meetings as, as we see fit, and in conjunction with that, that we change the February 27th board meeting to Tuesday, February 25th.
I'll second it.
Any, just a question, would we have that meeting again here, just to accommodate this public?
It's a good idea.
We have to make sure we get that date.
If they're, if they're busy here, we'll find another location that can accommodate a large enough crowd.
Do you need us to meet with you before the 25th to discuss the locations and...
If you have ideas, or anything would be appropriate, please feel free to share them with me, yes.
You'd have to talk with CRNR to make sure they're available.
Absolutely.
Well, I think we should settle on a meeting place if we can tonight.
Yeah.
Well, that's, we are, we are. We're going to be, we're going to be here.
We're meeting here unless...
Yes, we're going to meet with city staff after tonight, and hopefully this is available on the 25th. If it's not, we'll try to find another, another location in the community that can accommodate...
There are a couple of alternatives, senior center would be one.
Right, right.
Are we doing a presentation for organic recycling then, or no?
For the February 25th meeting?
Yeah.
If you want, we can do the presentation again, it's all up to you.
I'm just wondering when we're going to do that. Are you going to have a workshop prior to that?
Yeah, we're having, we're having two, we'll try to fit in two workshops before February 25th.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
And then we'd have the presentation here if needed, just like we have it tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? And the motion is?
To direct staff to organize additional town hall meetings as necessary, and to change the February board meeting to Tuesday, February 25th.
Okay. Since we're dealing with item 13, what do we want to do with that? Do we want to table it, or?
That is the motion, that is for table number 13, yes.
Oh, I see, yeah. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's move along to item 14, sponsorships. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was presented to the board at your January study session. We had two requests for sponsorships. One was for the Costa Mesa Community Run, and the other one is for, was for the Seventh Annual Gala at Estancia and Te Winkle Schools Foundations. And at the study session, I believe the board felt that both sponsorship would meet the district's purpose, and by meeting that purpose, it would, we would promote our programs, our solid waste and our sewer programs. However, the board directed staff to come back with additional information. Specifically, the board wanted to know, you know, of the participants in the community run, how many are from Costa Mesa? And we provided that in your report. According to organizers, there's about 1,000 people that attend that event, and of that 1,000 people, 80% are from Costa Mesa. And so that's a pretty good number, and that's why we recommend that the district becomes a $1,000 sponsorship at the Costa Mesa Community Run. That way, we can have a booth out there and promote our programs, and also our sanctuary anniversary, which is, which is this year. As far as the Schools Foundation, the Estancia Te Winkle Schools Foundation, we did find out from the organizers that approximately 150 to 200 people attend the gala, and most of them are from Costa Mesa, but because that's just such a small, niche area in the community, it's not community-wide like the community run is, that's why staff recommends that we at least still show our support by doing a half-page ad in their program for $100. And that's staff's recommendations for tonight.
Any comments? Art, what would that ad, what type of information would we be giving?
If there's something specific you want, we weren't, you know, recommendation, we weren't happy to hear it, but typically, like, you know, it could be like a fog program, it could be our composting program, large item collections, you know, any of our, any of the programs that we offer right now, we could put in there.
I'd like to see it directed toward the anniversary with bullet points about some of our programs. You know, the overriding theme of the ad might be the 70th anniversary, you know, and the services we've provided over the 70 years, fog and slap and all those.
Sure.
That's just a suggestion.
We could leave it in the hands of the staff, but I just want to make sure it's educational.
Right.
That's a good idea.
I'm sure there'll be more than 200 this year, because my family's going to freak up about 15.
Do I hear a motion? Well, the motion would be to accept, I'll make the motion to accept the sponsorship of the community run and deny the...
Do we have to separate motions, or there can be one?
Deny the annual gala, only, but only in the amount, approve the amount for $100.
Yeah, you could just basically approve the staff's recommendation.
Yeah, approve staff's recommendation.
Yeah, the staff's recommendation was the $100.
Right. So, so you're approved, you want to approve the...
Yeah, we'll prove the staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Bob? Well, Scott, you know, I sat down this afternoon, made a list of probably 25 different programs that I think the public ought to be made more aware of, that we offer. So what I'd like to have the staff do is come back to the study session in February with a list, and prioritize that list for what you think we ought to be getting the word out. These are huge opportunities for us. The organics program, you know, is another program that we're going to continue to need the interface with the public on either, as we move into the program, or as, as we still struggle with, you know, how we're going to do it.
Director Uden, I'll do one better, I'll do one better than that for you. As you know, we are promoting our 70th anniversary, and on March 20th, we'll be giving a presentation at the Chamber of Commerce, and I put together a presentation, which I'll be sharing with the committee, our 70th anniversary committee, you're more than happy to attend. It's a PowerPoint presentation, it's going to strictly focus on all the programs we offer to the community.
And maybe...
And that, and that, and that presentation will be videotaped by Channel 24, so it'll be online, too, as well.
But for us, Scott, what I'd like you to do is prioritize how you can get which of those programs you would like to further educate the community on, and then the different venues will offer different opportunities. So if we have a booth, that's one thing. If we have a half-page ad, you know, depending on what type of booklet it is, that's another thing. So I applaud staff for having this list, but what I'd like to have you do is prioritize for the board, and the board may have different ideas than staff, you know, on what, which of these programs you would like to get out first, and how are you going to do it?
Arlene?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on that. We have a 70th anniversary committee that's been doing this, and so we're looking into as far as what priorities we have, where we're putting our money, and what educational wise would be beneficial for everyone. So I think something like that, we could handle just, you know, with what we're doing. We're having another meeting, and at that time, we're putting that together ourselves, too.
Okay, very good. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Engineers' report, Rob?
Thank you, Mr. President. The project status report is before you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, Rob?
This is all the material that we've covered at our study session, is that correct?
Yes, in the project status report, that's correct.
Yeah, there's nothing new?
No.
We do need a motion, let's see, or do we?
No, this is a receiving cloud.
Okay, item 16, project 199?
Thank you. As Director Perry just noted, this is an item that was discussed at the previous study session, and the staff report was in agreement with the discussion, and the recommendations to the board are as discussed, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Art? We determined that we were going to submit a letter to the Orange County Sanitation District?
Yes, and that proposed letter is at the very tail end of the staff report and attachments. And a letter is addressed to the OCSD general manager from our general manager, and it was written to achieve the delicate balance of continuing our partnership with them while declining transfer of the Fairview Trump.
The letter looks good.
Yeah, it's a very good one.
I'd entertain a motion.
Move, move project number 199?
Items 1, 2, and 3, to be specific.
Propose Orange County San District transfer of Fairview Trump to Costa Mesa Sanitary District.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Treasurers' report?
Thanks, Mr. President, board members. This is your quarterly review of the investments. As of December 31, 2013, the portfolio was earning 0.833%. We had budgeted for the year to earn 0.90%. Since the beginning of the fiscal year, we started to see the average interest rate in the portfolio ticking up slightly as the months progressed, and I anticipate that. Throughout the balance of the fiscal year, we will continue to see that trend. Rates in the marketplace are starting to go up as to what we're allowed to invest in. Just a couple weeks ago, we saw our first 2% security that was available to purchase. We haven't seen that in many, many years. It's out at a five-year level, we're tapped out at the five-year level, but we do have funds that are liquid that will be looking to place some investments over the next couple months to take advantage of these rising interest rates. With that, I'm happy to be available for any questions you may have.
What happened today? It wasn't such a good day today.
Not such a good day, no.
You don't have an answer for me?
Socks go down, bonds go up, we're in bond, so we're okay on that.
Just receiving file?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, any other questions? Treasurers' report, Colin?
We have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I have a question for Colin.
Colin, I was at a special districts association meeting, or, I'm sorry, special districts risk management authority meeting two weeks ago, and the president of our board mentioned that there's some new Brown Act guidelines regarding recording of votes, and you have to be very specific now about votes, where you have to, you have to identify the yays and nays, and abstentions, and all the rest of that. Is that something that we need to be aware of, or?
That's, I believe we are aware of that.
Yeah. The district council gave us a memo about that law, and so we'll be following that new law, so.
Could we do that through a roll call vote of each item instead of, like, we've done that in the past, going, doing roll call votes?
Well, they didn't, I'm sorry, they didn't require a roll call vote in SDRMA, they had to be specific about, all is in favor, yes, four, you know, five, it was five to nothing, or there were no abstentions and stuff, but if, if the clerk is probably interpreting that for us, is it...
Did they ask for findings?
Not really, they just wanted it specific as to how the vote was done. Comment, but when you do a roll call vote, you're going to have, every person's going to say yea or nay with their name attached to it. That would solve the problem. We've done that in the past.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we always do.
I mean, would you agree, Colin?
Both options are available for the board, yeah, roll call vote would certainly solve the issue.
Okay.
We've done that many times.
Done it for years.
Thanks.
Okay. We're at meetings, local meetings, and I was at the Orange County Sanitation Board meeting last night. A couple things, they hired Steve Filarsky and Filarsky and Watt to provide labor negotiations and consulting services. and consulting services in regards to their negotiation with the union. 290 bucks an hour, what a deal.
How did you get that job?
Yeah. They also, we settled a lawsuit with Maladin Bontage, who's a contractor, that was putting in the levee into San Ana River, and the big tunneling thing, I mean, 14 million dollars in damage occurred, and the whole, the whole contract was 18 million. So that was, we did settle favorably with that. Also, the steering committee of the Orange County Sanitation District negotiated with SAPA. You knew about the lawsuit that finally got rectified. Well, we got SAPA to pay 117,000 dollars in consulting fees expended on an audit of SAPA's pretreatment program. We found that they were violating, you know, the rules. So anyway, but we did get compensated, and we have a good rela-, we're developing a better relationship with them now. I'm happy to report. Okay, that's all I have.
Funny your opportunity. Well, I am, I think I'm next, though. Before this meeting, Jim, Mr. Farron, myself, we attended the SAPA meeting in Fountain Valley, and they presented us with a handout that I'll show the board, you can look at, but they just wanted to let us know that the SARI line should be, the main line of the SARI line should be finished in between April and June of this year, which is pretty significant. And they have pictures of all the work that they're going through, and I thought it was, and they discussed that 90% of the pipeline is finished through the golf course, and by that, by the end of, you know, April through June, it should be completely finished. There's still a lot of projects on the mainstream projects that aren't finished, and it won't be finished until 2016, and the different reaches that the Corps is working on. So I have pictures and make comments about each picture that the board can look at. But the next thing, we approved that our representatives are going to go back to Washington, DC, to one, let them know that we need additional money to fund the SARI line project, and to discuss that, with FEMA, about the floodplains. We got out of the floodplain like 10 years ago, but Fountain Valley and the beach areas are still on the floodplain. So they're going back to try to work with FEMA, and have the FEMA and the county work together, and the Corps work together in trying to reduce the cost of flood insurance for those cities, you know, below us. And we approved that... They shouldn't be doing that. But I mean, that's, that's the goal. We were, we were happy to get out of it a number of years ago. But basically, that's it. It was a short meeting, we told them we had to leave early because we had to get to this meeting.
Okay, independent, let's see, His Doc?
Meeting, executive committee meeting on the 7th of January. Couple report, there were a couple of reports given, one, apparently CSDA is coming up with grants for workforce training. You might want to talk to CSD, to Bill Nelson from CSD, he had more information on that.
Yeah, we're familiar with it.
So, yeah, we've done it before, I think, right?
Well, I think, I think it has to go through the school district, it's a grant going through the school district, so we have, we have to go through the school district to get the money. It's regarding like internships and stuff like that.
Right, exactly. There was a report from John Withers on Lafco, apparently there's a whole bunch of seats open this summer for Lafco.
Really?
They're looking for people, and I, I'm not sure when the deadline to apply is, but I think it's coming up. Talked about some committee things, nothing earth-shaking, and then lastly, just a reminder that next Thursday, the 30th, is the quarterly meeting. It should be a really good meeting. The publisher, or there's somebody, the guy in charge of the Orange County Register is going to be speaking to His Doc's quarterly next, next week, so it should be an interesting meeting. That's it.
CSDA?
Well, that's me too. I attended two committee meetings in Sacramento last Friday, the member, my committees I serve on, the membership and the education. Membership, there's some programs coming out to increase the membership, and I'll give you more reports, or I'll, I'll do a written report once I get the minutes back from Charlotte. And then the education committee in the afternoon, we talked about the annual conference a lot, we talked about the clerk secretary and the general managers workshop that's coming up. I think the general managers workshop is actually in South Lake Tahoe, so I think you probably have to put that on your radar, Scott.
Yeah, I think you already booked my reservation.
And it was an interesting, we, this was the first meeting of the, of the year for the CSDA committees, and we've got some interesting new members on the committee. One gentleman, Gil Navarro, who's on the San Bernardino Regional or County Water District or something, and he, he complained a lot because he had originally been elected to the San Bernardino School Board, and then he got elected to the San Bernardino County Water Board, and the Attorney General came in and made him vacate one of his seats.
Made the news, made the news.
Yeah. Incompatibility of office, and it was, this guy was really fired up, and I actually Googled him to see who he was. If you get a chance, I would encourage my fellow board members to Google the name Gil Navarro and see what he's done. Very interesting individual.
Can I ask a question on that? Did he have to be, go through the process that we did?
He felt that he was not incompatible, and that he felt he was justified in holding both, but no, he didn't have to go through the same process we did, because the Attorney General, General went to him and said, "You're incompatible."
Yeah, that's good.
So, apparently there's a precedence that's been set in the state of California that is being followed pretty heavily now.
Okay, thank you.
Just information.
That answers my question.
That's it.
CASA? No meeting, or nobody attended it? Other meetings?
Didn't are?
Well, that's other meetings, that's, we're down to other meetings. Bob and I attended the CASA convention.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I have some notes on that. There were a number of presentations over a couple-day period in Palm Springs. East Bay Mud gave a presentation on their inflow, INI problem, inflow and infiltration, and they have quite a, quite a large problem. And they've enacted a, an ordinance that prior to home sale, there's, their sewer, the main, the main problem is in their sewer laterals, they're the main, the main thing they don't own. So only 25% of the sewer laterals pass the test on point of sale. And 75% need repair, and so they're, they're working on, they think that's their biggest problem of extraneous water getting into the sewer.
Are they going to sponsor a program to assist the homeowner?
Can I add to that for a second, Bob? You're talking about the lateral program, right? Their, their average cost to fix the laterals, which is required, is between 3,000 to 5,000 dollars. So with us giving up, we were giving 1,800, now we're down to 16, so it's kind of like the average that we had. And before you could sell your house, it wasn't mandatory, but viable, and that's something that we could, we, I know we've talked about it before, trying to do that, but I think we need to get more information from East Bay Mud, and see what, see what, exactly what their program looks like. Sorry, Bob, go ahead, you can continue.
Yeah, it's a pretty daring program.
It is a daring program.
But it is addressing their INI problem, and the INI is infiltration and inflow, and lots of the Northern California communities have a 10 to 1 increase in flow during rain events. Where in Southern California here, we have less than a 2 to 1 increase. So it has a huge impact on their infrastructure costs to get the water to the sewage treatment plant, and a huge impact on the, on the size of the facilities to get the water, get the water through the plants. Jeff Reed gave a, a presentation, Jeff Reed from the Orange County Sand District gave a, kind of an overview of, of Orange County Sand District's need for people, and the use of internships, and their, their very comprehensive leadership program. They call it BLAST, Building Leaders with Abilities and Skills for Tomorrow. And over half of the Orange County Sand District people have gone through that program. Let's see, there's a lot, I'll write this up for next month, but, Orange, let's see, Costa Mesa Sand District opted out of CASA a couple of years ago, and that saved us 12,000 dollars a year. So we, when we attend, we pay a little bit of extra fee, and then that was a conference in Palm Springs that Art and I attended. They're very worried and interested in, you know, why agencies opt out, so they're going to be doing a study. They now have full-time staff, through for full-time staff where they'd mostly used consultants in the past. There were a lot of talk about getting energy from renewables, and what a, what a, a role the sewage treatment plants can play in that, and an increased role. And there's a huge amount of energy that if the sewage treatment plants can accept them, that they could produce biogas. And there's a large interest in the industry in converting biogas to biomethane. Apparently that has now been, and then Orange County Sand District is doing pilots on that. That is, is more environmentally satisfactory than burning the, in the different ways that we burn it. Basically, Orange County Sand District burns it in cars and vehicles and things, a lot of small sewage treatment plants still flare those things. There was a lot of talk about air regulations and greenhouse gas emissions, and, I don't have my notes real organized here, but there's a lot of interest in, in, in putting your different organic waste from the community, such as food wastes, and fat soils and grease, into the, into their anaerobic digestive systems to increase the amount of energy that sewage treatment plants can produce. Encina has a biosolids dryer, they used to haul their wastes to a landfill or another place to dispose of. They put this dryer in place, and it significantly reduced their costs. I don't know if that, I'm sure Orange County Sand District has studied that. It reduces the impact of trucks going through the community and all kinds of things. Now, there's other things, but I'll write this up for next month. That's part of my report.
I have a couple of comments in relation to this. One, it was probably one of the better conferences that this organization has put on, because they've eliminated air, land, and water sections, and they, they said they did that for a purpose, because now they have the staff that can generate more interesting topics, so I...
That was a much better conference.
And then the second thing is, one of the speakers from Washington, DC, was talking about, like, our, with our program organics, that maybe we should be inviting the elected officials in Costa Mesa and other people to attend, to get, let them know what's happening. You know, like the city council, the water board, any elected official, we should invite them to one of the workshops, a personal invitation. He says that's really beneficial, when they understand it, it helps. Everybody understands it. Now, it's one of the things that they suggested that, I just related to what they were talking about, what our situation is. So if we could do that, I'm not sure that they'll, will attend, but we can make that invitation.
Sure, not a problem.
And there was also a series of roundtable discussions, and they had 10 different topics, and you could go to a table and talk. I went to the Collection System of the Future Roundtable, and it was mainly centered on some Northern California agencies that wanted to get five or six of the local agencies involved in roundtable discussions, so I left after half of the thing, but what CASA's trying to do is figure out different ways to engage their members, and roundtable discussions are going to be in their future.
They focus more on treatment than anything else, which is why it wasn't that beneficial to us.
But the quality of speakers that they had this time is so much better.
They didn't have that one guy, that tall guy with the glasses.
Yeah, they had a guy like that, but, no, but I thought, wouldn't you agree, Bob? The speakers were much better, much better.
Yeah, I thought it was a better conference.
And we, you know, if we can come out of there with three or four good ideas that we can pursue, it's beneficial.
Okay, other meetings qualifying for reimbursement, Arlene?
I had a fantastic report, and I left it. So I will tell you the meetings I went to, but I can turn it in, it's a nice report, unfortunately, and, but some of you went to the same thing, so it doesn't matter, you know the same people. On December 3rd, I went to the 70th Anniversary Committee, Art and I attended. We will, in, on the study session, be finalizing and telling you about everything else that's we're getting. It's very exciting, and we're going to do a good job as far as a district, as far as having a lot of publicity, and being out there, and people being aware of what's going on. And then on 12/9, we had a special session, which was closed session, and then on 12/10, we had a study session, and of course, I have the notes on that. 12/13, we had a liaison meeting, which we hosted as our district, and had the water as well as the city there. And the next one that comes up, the city will be hosting. And then on 12/17, we had a town hall meeting, and, which of course was on organic recycling that we all know. And everyone attended but Bob, and Bob was on whatever, what was that, a conference call or something? No, you weren't. You just listened.
He was in Iowa.
Yeah, that's right. And then 12/19, we had our board, regular board meeting.
I was in Iowa, so...
That's it. I'm fast.
Earlier, earlier, the second week of the month, or first week of the month, I attended my first board meeting as a director of the Special Districts Risk Management Authority, and it was a lot of insurance stuff, so I won't bore you all with that, but there was a couple of things about, you know, Scott, we've, we've been, there's an incentive program where we get some return premiums for, and over the last couple of years, that, that return has been in like the 500 or 600,000 dollars statewide, but this year it's 60,000 dollars being returned, so don't expect a big refund from SDRMA this year. There are a lot of other things, but I'll, I'll cover those in a...
Do they have a lot of losses, or what?
I think so. I think so. Workers' comp, workers' comp is always the biggest challenge for any kind of insurance company, and there are some substantial workers' comp problems, so.
Okay, thank you. Old business, anybody have anything?
No.
New business? Oral communications and director comments?
One comment. As you all know, we had a situation in the family, Sandy lost her father on Monday, and I just wanted to thank all of you that have given me your, your sentiments, and the flowers were really, really nice. You could tell there was an island touch to those flowers, and they were absolutely beautiful. They got some tears from both my wife and my father-in-law's lady friend, and I didn't really cry, but thank you, thank you all for, for being so special, and I really do appreciate all of them.
I have one comment, it's not, nothing to do with the Sanitary District, just a stancy issue. We are hosting on February 5th, the Game vs. Mesa High. All of our past Athletic of the Year recipients, we've been invited to attend, and there's probably going to be like 30 of them. So a lot of you guys know some of these guys that are going to be back there to accept the recognition, and a few other things that are going to be happening, but I think it's pretty neat, you know? So we've got these, even back to 1968, 69, guys are coming back to get recognized as Athletic of the Year. We put up a new board by the trophy case with all of their names by year, so it's really neat, so this will be the first time that they've seen it.
You act like 68's that old. I was...
But I thought, since, if you know anybody that might be...
But I thought, since, if you know anybody that might be, that be coming back, might be good to attend.
Kurt Thomas coming?
I've invited him, but he hasn't responded yet. Just, that's for Jeff, too, because he, he likes that stuff.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of the cause? This meeting is adjourned, and thank you, staff, for your hard work tonight. I know this is a hassle, putting this thing together, and you did a fine job.